Very good, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited to the essence of all.
Thank you, welcome. Lovely crowd tonight. Standing room only. There is some seats up here in the front. We're gonna get rid of that back row of seats. We're gonna get rid of that so everyone can come up to the front. Alrighty, financial report. Has anyone had a chance to take a quick peek at the financial report? And I'd like to have a motion to approve.
So good.
God, I missed a minute. I am missing a minute. I need better glasses here. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2014.
I see a move.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Financial report and payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion that we accept those as written.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second to motion?
Any discussion on the financial report?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. So I don't jump around real quickly, I'd like to invite the board to go down on the ground level with me for a presentation. We got a presentation we'd like to do this evening, and I'd like to call up Sergeant Scott Scott is gonna be our first police officer that's gonna be retiring here very shortly. We're gonna make, we have a little proclamation for Scott, we'd like to make his presentation to him. Get him right in the middle there? Okay. Be it known that the mayor, commissioners, and the citizens of the Elton community hereby recognize the outstanding public service. It's hard for me to move around these cheaters. Can I, should I make, say it first, or are you gonna?
Yeah, just say it first.
Alright, let me say it, and then I'll give the award to Scott. Okay, hereby recognize the outstanding public service provided by Sergeant Scott Canower during his tenure with the Elton Police Department, beginning August 3rd, 1989 to September 19, 2014. Sergeant Canower's leadership, knowledge, experience, and initiative have resulted in raising the professional standards of the Elton Police Department and setting the examples for others who have served with him over many years and those who will follow. We hereby extend our sincerest appreciation to Sergeant Canower, along with his certificate of special recognition. One of the, I would like to say a couple things about Scott. Going back several years ago, when the first time that I served as mayor, Scott actually was, snuck over to my house, and I can't tell you that we, we had a beverage, I guess it was like a soda, and we talked about how we could elevate the Elton Police Department to what it is today. And I can tell you, at that meeting, we had Scott and Matt, and there's a few other members that are no longer here with us today, but what we talked about that day was how we could get our police department, we were going through police officers back in the early 90s through the late 90s. We were, we were trained, and our officers would go away and work for the county, or work for the state, or go to work for another entity. And what we did is we raised the level. Scott crawled to the table, and he said, here's what we need to do. We need to start finding guys that are better quality candidates, better quality for the town of Elton. And it was with his leadership that we brought our level to what it is today, and I think that, you know, sincerely, I thank you. Thank you. Scott, if you'd like to say anything?
No, that's okay.
He's going back to work his last few days. I thought I almost saw a tear.
Yeah, there was a tear there.
Was there a tear there?
There was a tear.
I was trying to bring it out, I mean, I couldn't do it. Okay, Lou, you're, you're on the Town Administrator's Report.
The first item, first item I have is the Elton Waste Treatment Plant, big L, influence screen bid, we put out a bid for an influence screen for this facility, and we have two bids. First bid's from Franklin Miller, and the equipment is bid at $146,190. 146, 190, from Franklin Miller. The second bid is from JWC Environmental, and their total bid is $139,661. I only ask the board to postpone the, a notice of award until I have our engineer reveal, make sure they meet all our compliance standards.
Would you like for us to make a tentative motion to accept the low bidder of JWC?
You can make a tentative bidder to accept JWC Environmental as the low bidder, and then we'll make sure they're qualified.
Do we have a motion to accept JWC for $139,000 something?
$661.
Contingent upon making sure that they are references? The proper bidder, or everything comes up to standard?
So.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Next item I have, wellhouse number five proposal. Wellhouse number five, I discussed at the workshop, Lee was in here, an engineer with KCI, this is for the design of the wellhouse and equipment. The well is already in place and permitted. This is just the facility that cooperate that well. Their total bid is $84,000, including contingency items. I would recommend that we permit KCI to begin the design of the station.
Very good, this was something we talked about at the workshop, and I think our questions were answered at the workshop last Wednesday. Do we have a motion to accept the proposal from KCI for the wellhouse number five proposal?
I have a question, real quick. The bid, it's only a single bid for this?
Yes.
They're not gonna put it out to anybody else for bid?
They've already done a lot of the work. They've already did the well installation, the geotechnical work, and everything. Normally I wouldn't, and they've already done the design for well number 2R. They'll just follow suit with that same design, rather than start from scratch again with another engineering company?
The money spent on 2R, is it something that, with the same amount of money as far as the design, is it something that they already had in design? And I was trying to get to that during the workshop. Was it already something that they had in design as far as the dimensions of the wellhouse and/or other things that would, should save us money, since they've already done it a couple times?
Yes.
So they've already saved us money by duplication of design?
It'll be similar, the design will be very similar. Still 100,000 gallons a day, so the pumps, the submersible pumps will be similar.
But the cost of doing it would be less then?
I'm sorry?
The cost of doing it would be less?
Yes.
How about the cost of doing it is less?
I'm sorry?
The cost of doing it is less than, than the other ones, if it's gonna be the spectrum is the same?
I don't have the other bid price here, what the total number is. If you had asked me at any time, I would've had it, but I...
Alright.
Well, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna see if there's enough, if there's a motion to move forward with this. Do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any further discussion?
You already have a second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have, bicycle memorandum. G-Man was gonna be here, but she's involved with WMAFCO activity this evening, so I'm in the barrel, so to speak. She discusses at a meeting, a workshop, this memorandum of understanding actually is with, between the county and the Department of Transportation, WMAFCO, to furnish about $40,000 worth of grant money for bicycle signage, racks, pavement markings, things of that nature, for the number of municipalities participating in. In Cecil County, Elton will participate to a certain extent, roughly $9,000 of that grant money will go towards Elton to purchase primarily our signs, and, not to purchase our signs, but to the bike racks, for the purchase of the bike racks. We don't actually get the money. The state or the county will purchase all the equipment using that grant, and then the town will install them. In order for us to participate in this grant, we have to provide in-kind services, which will be provided by the Department of Public Works. They will install the bike racks when we receive them, they will install the signs when we receive them, and they will install the pavement markings on non-state routes when we have designated what those routes will be, consistent with the town's master bicycle plan. I need the board's authority for Mayor Fasona to sign a letter to Donald Halligan.
Mayor Fasona! Joe, would you like to come up here? Oh, what did I say? Oh my God, I'm programmed. I am so programmed. Okay, that's a, that's a stick there with Mayor Hall. I'm sorry, I just default in here, and I just, you know. Okay, we need a letter signed to Donald Halligan, Director of Officer Planning and Capital Programming, and Maryland Department of Transportation for us to move ahead with this project. Do we have a motion to allow me to sign this letter to Donald Halligan?
I make a motion to accept this letter.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
And we have a second. Any discussion on the letter to WMAFCO?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please pass that over.
Please comment that former Mayor Fasona put a tremendous amount of effort into having this occur, so I would compliment him on all the effort behind the bicycle plan.
If I'm still permitted. Well, I have to, I have to tell you that Mayor Fasona worked effortlessly in regards to working on the bike paths and so forth, and he was a very active member of WMAFCO. Now, I will recognize the former mayor right now, and I probably shouldn't right now, but I will. Go ahead, Joe, I'll let you say something.
The only thing I wanted to say was, the money that we've got is all irreversible. It's not costing anything to this town or any of the other towns in the county. All that money is reversible.
Thank you.
It's all a mistake.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Anything else still in your business, Lou?
Not now, it's all happened.
Any old business from the board? Mary Jo?
I have no old business this evening.
Earl?
I have not.
Charlie?
I have none either, Louis, but do you wanna give a summary of what you saw last night and what has occurred today? We were out riding last night in the storm that hit apart Elton.
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Gibbons for calling me. I think he called me around 8 o'clock or so, and let me know that Elton was in a state of jeopardy, and obviously the first thing I do is respond. In route, the first thing I do in an emergency of this nature is to contact the water treatment plant, Severn Trent, because if we have water and all the stations work, then we can have water for our citizens, whether they have power or not, not hot water, but cold water. And we could fight fires if we had, had fires during an emergency. And the treatment plant, the treatment plant was fine, and all the pump stations and everything were operating practically, so I knew we had all the water we needed. Second call I made in route, I pulled off the road to make the call against the law to drive. I called Dan Handley, and he was already mobilizing the Department of Public Works to get their trucks and chainsaws and everything they would need to clear debris from the streets and everything. That'll allow emergency vehicles, police, and citizens to get around. And he was, had that underway. Then when I got to Elton, of course, I called the mayor, and the mayor and I, Commissioner Gibbons, went out and went all the, all through all the communities, and I guess the, the hardest set communities that we've been able to determine is Elton Heights, Friendship Heights, North Street. Those are probably the worst that we saw. And of course, Steve Rico and I went out again today, during the daylight, where we could see a little better. And I was impressed by Delmarva's response, that they had replaced the poles next to North Street that were more or less sheared off. And of course, I interfered with the power and delivery service, they had. I checked the Delmarva, I always check Delmarva's outage, they have an outage on their website, outage map. And according to that map, as of 7:33 last night, they had 62 outages in Elton. Calora, if you know where that is in Cecil County, they had 124, so it must've been pretty, of course, they're more rural than we are, so it affected them too. But they, all that power was restored, and I think the mayor, he didn't have power, and I think all that power's been restored as of noon today, and that was their, their goal to do that. I don't think we suffered any damages to town property, and the Public Works has done an outstanding job of moving debris from the road, cutting up trees, helping citizens. They have probably, I don't know how much wood the chip get, but quite a bit. They'll probably fill up the landfill or the, our nature center with chips, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
DJ, any old business?
Three things. At the last workshop, I believe Gary had thrown it up, that Ken Better was talking about an altitude pump, and I, it flew right over the top of my head exactly what he was talking about. And once I was educated on it, it was something that Ken and some other people thought would be necessary for that, that water tower. I think the board should talk about it. Do we need it? Is it vital? If it's vital, I think we need to do it, and we shouldn't wait.
Where do we stand at on that attitude? I saw the email that just went back through.
He sent me an email, and because of the cost of that, and it was not a plan, a capital expense, what I would ask, I'm gonna have to do a hydraulic model using that valve and system, and that way we can tell what actually happens, rather than the strength of, of just, we should do it, we spent $10,000 on a valve, but if it's necessary, we will do it.
The, the other thing that I think that we need to discuss and come to some type of agreement is the parking meters. And did we hire an employee? We haven't hired an employee for that yet, right? We just keep on kind of kicking the can further down the road, further down the road, and it's time that we, at least I feel that we make a decision for the business owners, for the residents, for everybody, it's, it's well past time. My decision on that, since I'm bringing it up, is I think that we keep the parking meters and that we hire somebody, but that we do change the hours downtown. I think that would be the best thing for, for the people downtown, instead of a two-hour or three-hour. And/or, I was at the Alliance workshop, and Rob from the tattoo shop had brought up about, some of them are longer than that. You know, he could have somebody in there for four hours or so. I don't know if there's something that you would put in the windshield of a car, you know, certain certificates. I mean, anybody can get on a printer and make that certificate, I guess, and then shove it in the window. But at least, we need to start somewhere, as a board.
Do you have a motion that you'd like to make?
I'll make a motion to keep the, keep the parking meters where they are, hire somebody, and extend the hours from two hours to three hours. Can I do that?
Yeah, you were, it's set by ordinance, so you can't do it by motion. You're gonna have to, I'll bring, if the board reaches consensus to extend that, I will amend the ordinance and bring it in for introduction, and then you can adopt it.
So currently...
I have a motion to override an ordinance.
So currently, right now, we have parking meters in place.
Yeah, we have two hour enforcement.
So the, I guess, out of everything that you're asking, whether or not we wanna move forward with hiring a person, I would agree that we can move forward. This is board, I, I'd be happy to have the enforcement additional person, whether we, whether we're gonna make that step to enforce the parking issues that we have down there, but I absolutely do agree that we need to change it. We need to change the amount of hours that we're allowing downtown.
And it's not just for downtown, I don't want anybody to think it's just downtown. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I, you know, you go to Walmart, I was going to Walmart, and somebody complained to me, because they recognized me, because I knocked on their door, that somebody had parked in a handicap spot at Walmart, you know. Wow, I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to call the police department, I can't go over there and make them do that, just because I'm a commissioner, you still need to call the police department. But there's nobody to enforce that during the day, or he would be there. So there's a lot of things outside of town limits that that parking official or enforcer would take care of, is that correct?
Yes.
Right? And you, police chief, you find it essential that we have somebody?
Yeah, if you're gonna wanna meter parking or downtown enforcement, ready for parking, yeah, you gotta have somebody for daytime hours.
So then I would say that, Lou, can you prepare? Where do we wanna go with the ordinance? Are we looking at, right now, we have a two-hour enforcement through Main Street, all the way, I guess all of Main Street, and all of, throughout the whole town is two-hour parking.
The power delays the hours?
Yeah. I don't think this is as easy as we're saying to change, like, right now, because we have to look at the ordinance, plus, we, I think we should, at a workshop, look at a map to see where we enforce all the parking, because, you know, whether we have three-hour in one area, or we, and we keep the meters in another, we need to realize that the meters, they do not make any replacement parts for those meters anymore. There's a lot with this, I think, that we need to discuss, instead of just saying order to change, because it's in too many areas.
Well, let's do this. Can we add it to our next workshop next week? And we'll draw a map of our downtown parking with the, the hours of the parking area, and we'll get here, and we'll, we'll discuss it next Wednesday, and we'll bring it to, ahead for the following meeting. You think we're capable of doing that?
Yeah.
Well, can we have a motion to hire enforcement at the next workshop to discuss, as far as time goes?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need a motion for the enforcement. It's budgeted, we can move forward with it. It's done?
I got it on my do list, it's done.
Alright, alright, it's done.
And the last thing that I, the last thing that I have is, at the last workshop, Louis had brought up about the solar company wanting to dive in and really putting an in-depth proposal together, and I'm all for it. I really would, I think the board should, it's no money, it's no cost to the town of them doing that work, it would be cost to their company, not, not to the town, or taxpayers, of them figuring out exactly what their proposal to us would be. So I would like that to happen. I would like to tell Louis to tell him to make it happen.
Do we have a consensus in the board? I'm good, I'm good with it. Let's move forward.
Alright.
Very good.
And that's it for?
Old business.
Old business.
Okay, new business. Okay, I had a couple things. I wanted to touch base a little bit about the storm we had last night. I'm not sure if it's a straight-line winds, or if it was a mini tornado, but I can tell you, we had a lot of damage throughout the town last night. And it's hard to believe that if anyone traveled through, through the heights, down through Friendship area, and even through Hermanage Drive, I think we had three homes that are, had to be vacated last night. I mean, it was a pretty serious storm that we had, and if you're on one side of town, you probably didn't even know it hit here. But I can tell you, the crews are, were out there, they were doing their best to make some, some things happen. And I have to say that I was the last pole that they replaced today, around 11:30, so I finally got electricity around 12:30 today, so I didn't get any special treatment as the mayor, I was probably the last person back with electricity today, quite frankly. But I wanted to make a comment. Lou, do you think that we should reach out to the county government and ask their county government if they can lend us some of their wood chippers, or, or any of their equipment that could help our Public Works with this? And I see Dan out there, is that Dan? Is this something that you could use some help with? Some, some of their equipment maybe we can use? I'll reach out and ask them if it's something that we, if we have the manpower to use their equipment. I don't know. I don't think we've ever asked them for any help like this before, but I'm willing to do it, if it would help us get the job done any quicker.
What's gonna happen, it's gonna be a lot of repetitive effort, because everything we're picking off will bring back out repetitively accordingly. So, I've got a number of backos, I've got a number of five-ton trucks, I believe in the house I can keep it. If we reach out for help, we need operators as well, that's only true for us.
Okay. Well, I'm letting you know, if you need any help, please reach out to us, because we'll reach out to them, and I'm sure that they'll give us some type of assistance.
Thank you.
Along with that, the other day, we had something that's available to the public, if, there's actually an insurance for, for being prepared for natural disasters. I mean, it was kinda crazy that this actually came, but I looked through it, and you can pick these up here at Town Hall, is there some of these here? So if anyone wanted a guide, the do's and don'ts, and what you can do with your insurance company during these type of disasters, we have this manual here that has some great information in it. Along with that, we had a, we had a proposal, or I guess, two workshops ago, Chief Donnelly made a proposal to us, not a proposal, and gave us an update on exactly how the Elton Police Department works. And one of the slides that he showed us was that we may be out of room at the Elton Police Department for, for multiple things. You know, the one thing that really hit home with me was, was when it comes to the evidence room. And he took me in there the one day, and there's evidence that we can never get rid of, and there's evidence that you can take from point A to point B after a certain amount of time. But by looking at the slide and actually physically going in there, there's not a lot of room. So it, it made me try to start to think a little bit outside the box, and I want, I wanna ask the commissioners and the town, town department heads to take a look at what I'm, I'm gonna kind of bring to the table, and let me know if it makes any sense, it may or may not. We bought the building next door to us in, I think, 2000 or 2001, and, you know, I served as mayor at that point, and I think the reason why we bought that building was if we ever needed to expand our offices here. I mean, it was a kind of a no-brainer to us. At the time that we acquired that building, we, we had Severn Trent, I think, moved directly in, and then I think now we have the Parks and Rec group in. But the last couple times I've gone by, I've actually looked at the layout of the building, and, and the building is, is wide in the front, and it kinda comes down into a triangle toward the back. But that triangle toward the back actually exceeds past the Police Department, and, and my out-of-the-box crazy thinking is, is that a building or a lot that could be used for renovation to be exclusively used, per se, for the Police Department? That give, I, I figure there'd have to be 5, 6,000 square feet there if we made it two floors. But I want you to take a look at it, see if there's something that makes sense. It may not make any sense at all, but it's right next door here, and it may be something we can build into, connect right into your back doorway to where you'd have total access. Now, we have another issue, of course, we use it for Parks and Rec, and they're very active over there, but maybe we can work around all this together. So we just can ask everyone to take a look at it, tell me if I'm looking at it the wrong way, or maybe looking at it the correct way. So that was, so that's what I wanted to bring up. I also wanted to mention today is Michelle's birthday, she turned 39 today, so I just wanted everyone to know, today was her birthday, so.
Happy birthday!
So that was, that's all my new business. Now we're gonna go with new business with the commissioners. DJ, I'll start on your end, you have anything new today?
One thing.
One thing. Public safety. On, I've gotten a few phone calls and texts. There is a lot more people begging for money out on state roads. I'm assuming they're state roads. Walmart, those corners down at the Burger King, standing there. What can we do? The biggest problem is just the safety issue of them walking up and down, people seeing them, swerving, stopping.
People will call in on one or report it. We take action when we see it. You know, we're not always there when we're doing. And some of those areas are out of our jurisdiction, for instance, when they're up at Blaskey Highway in Delancey or they're south of, south of 40 on 213.
If they're standing on the median at Delancey and 40, you can't do anything? It would have to be Sheriff's Department?
Sheriff's Department or State. But our people will still stop and move along, but they'll take enforcement action.
All right, and just dial 911, non-emergency. All right. All right. So I have?
Thank you, Charles.
Mary Jo, is there an update on the senior building across the street? And also, any update with businesses coming down there?
The senior building, their management and marketing department is moving in on North Street on September the 13th. They'll be taking that office space for about a year. The actual High Street apartments did the same thing. The new pizza place that's New York-style, or New York's finest, Pizza and Chicken, was scheduled for September 1st, but they had some code problems with it, and they fixed that, it's all done. They're hoping for the 8th or the 13th of this, or, I'm sorry, the 8th or the 15th of this month, they will be open for Fall Fest. Another thing that just happened today, there was a bid put on Main Street Cafe. So that's working, and there's also was a bid today for the old county town building. So there's a lot of interest downtown.
Okay, thanks. That's it, Rob.
I just had two things in the safety department. Sunday night, around 11 o'clock, I noticed there was a dirt bike coming from 7-Eleven, and it must've been going anywhere from 40 to 60 miles an hour, no lights. I noticed it on my way, getting ready to go to work. And then the night before last, well, the night before last Saturday, there's a three-wheeler that comes up Delaware Avenue, wide open, up the hill, and it goes towards Route 40. I noticed that within the last four, three or four days. So I just want the police officers to be aware that there is a bike traveling Delaware Avenue and...
I'll send our night shift to take a look at it and look out for it.
Worst part about it, I just seen on the news where an accident happened where there was no lights on a vehicle, and there was a three-wheeler that hit a car making a turn. I was walking down my driveway when that happened, so I know that there's something going on in the town with the three-wheelers. Other than that, I just wanted to bring that to attention.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Jo?
I wanted to, actually, I should've brought up the old business, but I know the meeting, I wasn't here the last meeting, but on the video, there was a question concerning Comcast and Tom Worley contacting him. I did tell Michelle, but in case anyone from the board needed to contact, he did retire Tom Worley from Comcast, so Chris Comer is our contact person now. So if anyone needs to get in touch with Comcast for any reason, he is the contact. And if you'd like, send me an email, I'll send you his information. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, in the business district, the buildings that are down there, first floor are commercial retail, second and third are apartments. I noticed up on West Main especially, first floor is a lot of apartments now. And I think the code enforcer needs to keep watch about who's, if they're living on the first floor in the business district, because that is not allowed. And I think it's something we should look into.
You want to repeat that again?
What's that?
You want to repeat that again so my eyes can actually, my ears can hear? I said, repeat that again.
Oh, about the first floor being commercial retail?
Right.
In the business district?
Okay.
And the second and third is your apartments?
Right.
And some of the first floor are being run out as apartments.
Gotcha. So you said you want us to keep an eye on that a lot of the buildings?
Yeah, I think, I feel pretty comfortable that Chip is aware of two of them, two of the locations. Chip's our building inspector, and he's been made aware of it. But if there's any more, we have to keep...
I noticed a new one today, so I will definitely get it to him.
Fantastic. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. DJ, if you had a question?
Chief, is there anything that you could tell us, that you're allowed to tell us, about the two individuals, the two teenagers that are missing? Are we any closer to finding those two people? That you're allowed to talk about? I know there's certain things you can't, but...
No, it's not anything that I want to discuss publicly. I will say this, it continues to be worked on, obviously.
Sure.
Almost around the clock. But beyond that, I don't want to put anything out that would...
Fair enough.
And I'm sure you understand.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief.
There was an increase in the award?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
And what's that amount?
Metro Crime Stoppers offered up an additional $2,000, so it's $7,000 for information.
Thank you, Chief.
I wish I could say more, but...
I understand.
Very good. Okay. I have a list of, do we have the microphone we can put back or, we've got it hidden down there? I'd like to, when I call your name, I'd like for you to come up tonight. We've been having problems hearing all the comments, so I need you to actually sit up and speak in. The first friend I'd like to invite up is Mr. Bob Litzenberg of 105 Walnut Lane.
Yes, sir. As Mr. Mayor knows, my wife was very upset last Saturday morning, if you recall.
Yep.
We were having coffee, okay? I have coffee with four or five different gentlemen. All of us have served in the military, all of us have worked for a living and so forth, and we've paid our fair share. Walter Chikowski was broken into two weeks ago. Dick Reed back here was broken into a while back. Jim Nicholson's been broken into twice. Eric Ammon's been broken into twice. Six times now, I've been, had thieves in my driveway. Saturday morning, as you know, my wife went out to get her golf clubs, they were gone out of the car. She forgot to lock the car for the first time probably forever. On Friday night, they're gone. I guess my point is, you look at different things here, and it's gotta be frustrating. It's frustrating for me, it's frustrating, it's gotta be frustrating for the police department. And the paper today says, fleeing man tosses loaded handgun near kids. Coach is charged with reckless endangerment, blah, 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 blah. He's charged with four or five different things, and he's out on $20,000 bail shortly after his arrest. I guess my issue would be, is there some way that the town, the mayors, and the councilmen, and the police chiefs of these towns could go to the state's attorney's office and ask them, instead of plea bargaining all these crimes down, because most of these people have been charged with crime three or four times and are on probation? I mean, we see it week after week after week in the paper. I think it's time that the powers-to-be in the towns go before the state's attorney and say, it's time that you start sending these people to jail. I mean, it's a thing where golf clubs are a personal thing, particularly to a woman. It's simple as that. Wouldn't make any difference to me because I can't hit anything anyhow. That's just the one thing. I mean, suggesting that, that you maybe can get together with the state's attorney and whatever it may be.
And I will make that happen. I'll get with the chief, and chief and I'll go see him, make a call to Ellis Rhodes, and we'll schedule to go see him.
Sure. I mean, it's no disrespect to the attorneys, but it seems like that's part of the problem. They're paid to do what they're doing, and they're gonna get a reduced, whatever it may be, for the thing. But it's gotta be frustrating for the police department to make arrests before you even get back, the paper's not dry, and air out on the street.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's ridiculous. A while back, there was discussion about a dress code for the town. I don't think that you're gonna ever change the downtown image as long as we have people walking up and down the street with no shirts on, their pants hanging down to their knees, tattoos all over them. It's not a very good representation of the downtown Elton. I don't know whether you can get an ordinance to do that or not, whatever it may be, but something should be done about it.
You know, I'm actually glad that you brought that up. John, could we have you look and see if we can? And Lou, maybe you're already aware if we can or can't, but I would like to see it to where you can't go bare-chested on a public street.
I brought it up a few years back, and I had requested that we put that, make that into effect, because it came up in another town where a woman actually went topless because nothing was in their code. And I asked for it, it did not pass there, but I would love to have that. I just mentioned it yesterday. You're right, we need to change the image, and we have, we've got to enforce like that. And I'm not asking someone in their neighborhood in their backyard cutting their grass.
That's not the point.
That's not the point. It's in the business district.
Lou, what's the...
Well, I think I'll defer to law to Mr. Downs, but his first cause should be to the ACLU, because that's who we'll hear from as soon as it becomes called. Having been down this road before and very familiar with the ACLU's cause here with the back of the First Amendment rights.
But I think, I believe that we have the right to say it on a public street. Now, they have the right to...
In a public street?
Yes.
And the public has the right to be on the public street. And they have a right to their rights.
It's gonna be a challenging thing, but let's see what we can do. I agree with you.
In Ocean City, they've made a law in Ocean City, you can't use profanity on the beach. So if you could do that, you ought to be able to make some kind of a law in this situation. There's something else I didn't write down. If they don't write it down, I forget. Oh, okay. There's a, I don't know whether it's called a pawn shop on 213 that's where the nail depot used to be. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
I went to pawn shops looking for, I just happened to look for the pawn for those golf clubs that had GPS installed and so forth. And I was told that they're not a licensed pawn shop, and they're not involved in the... Well, my wife was told, which you got the report, that the police department, when they gave her the certain number of the GPS and so forth, that it's put in your database and it goes around to the pawn shops. Are they in that system?
Yeah, we're part of the pawn database. I'm not sure if that shop is or not. I don't know. I'm not gonna give you that.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I was talking to a fellow that had his shop broken into, his golf clubs were stolen and some other equipment. He went to that pawn shop, and they said that they, the person came in there to pawn the golf clubs, but they told them to go next door to the dog grooming place. You aware of anything like that over there?
What's...
Well, that's where he supposedly found these golf clubs anyhow.
Okay.
I mean, that, just a question.
I guess the question is, is if they're classified as a pawn shop, they should be in the system.
Absolutely.
And if they're not in the system, then we need to step up and make sure that they are in the system. Because they're, that's probably where everyone's going.
I'll look into finding out.
Thank you.
She, the woman there, the principal, she told me she wasn't in the system.
Very good.
The sand buildup will double rapidly. Couple of years, year or so ago, something was supposed to be done about that, what's been done about that with the bridges? Is that something?
When you're asking me a question, I don't know.
The state will remove it.
It is, the state will not remove that sand.
Well, why can't the town do it?
It's just a matter of the cost.
Well, we've been talking about costs now for five damn years. Excuse me, but for five years.
I'll look at it.
Doesn't affect me because I don't live out in that area. But it certainly affects other people. I mean, it's something that ought to be looked into.
Yep.
At one time, it was, they had the same problem with it, and somebody in the town on a Saturday morning went out with a drag line, cleaned it up just like that, it was done within a half a day, whatever.
Very good.
You know what I mean? And another thing about the hookers. Mr. Reed and I were approached a while back, where we, Mr. Reed?
Yeah.
Right outside the door here by a couple hookers. I mean, they're all over town.
It's been a while.
It's been a while, yeah. So it's time to look into some of these things.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Mr. Dave Fordice, 115 Osage.
Evening. Hi. I'm Eve Looser. Dave Fordice, 115 Osage Street, right behind American Home and Hardware. That's where my street runs. I've got three things tonight, but let me just make a general comment. When you come into town here, I think Mary Jo mentioned all the rentals that are on West Main, and I can tell you that it's not only all the rentals on West Main, you've got bail bondsman shops all over town. How, if you're gonna improve the image of the town, I think you need to think about what businesses are allowed in here, because that doesn't present a good image for the town of Elton. All right, so I've got three things. First is, on my street, there was a speed bump that was put in roughly a year ago, maybe a little bit more than that. When it was put in, it was either inferior materials or poor construction. It needs to be either repaired or replaced. And I would ask that a second one be put in right at, in front of 117, my next-door neighbor's house, because that links up with Mackall, and people fly around that corner. We have little kids on that street. And I'd appreciate a written response to that. Second item, this is my water and sewer bill, okay? We use less than half the minimum. My water and sewer bill is $157.62. It's too high. Yes, sir. Yep. I got, that's point one. The second one, which has irked me since I've moved here 10 years ago, is you got this $15 charge for the bay, and I understand it's for the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. I do not support that organization, and I'm inquiring to the board why it is I'm forced to pay it.
State law.
State law?
State law.
Can you let me know what state law it is?
We'll get it acted, General Assembly enacted. Can you get Mr. Fordice the copy of that for him? We'll have it sent to you.
Thank you. Okay. Third item is, my wife noticed in the, and I don't remember which local paper it was, that you had written a letter to the editor about a solar farm somewhere. I'd like to offer the suggestion, two things. One is, I'm not sure what the purpose of such an endeavor would be and whether it would cost us any money, either in initial construction or maintenance. And the second, the second thing is, I would like to offer a place for it, which would be the park at the end of Mackall. Install a solar farm there, put up a big fence, get rid of the culvert with all the trees and all of the drugs and all of the hookers down there, and hopefully cut down on some of the traffic back and forth from Holland Shade Manor up my street. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, we talked in our work session a little bit about the speed bumps, and one of the things you probably already do is you guys target certain areas that request speed bumps, but is there a way we can just get a list of all these requests for the speed bumps, start setting up a little bit more of a radar area for these certain identified areas for the speed bumps? Just be a little bit more visible. I'm not trying to throw extra work, it's just that if people are coming in here with the speed bump issue, we're getting all the buy-ins from their residents, and then we see if we get the 60% buy-in. During those requests, the more visibility of police radar radars, I think it would help a lot. So I'm just asking if you can do something along the list that is given to the town for speed bumps? You're clear, I'm clear with that question?
Yeah, I understand that, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
Dave, I wanted to mention to you that about the solar panel farm, when we had the workshop, and we're gonna go ahead and move forward with it and look at multiple sites. One in particular, the site was between the wastewater treatment plant and landing lane. And the cost behind it was, the hard cost of the town was the land cost. But the solar panel folks come in and... But the solar panel folks come in and, and they, they put all the solar panels up literally at no cost to the town. There's a 20-year agreement that we would have to do, and they never gave us a firm number on how much it's gonna save us on electricity costs, but the estimate...
Us being the town?
Yes, that's correct. And the estimate could be anywhere from 70 to $100,000 just from having 10 acres of solar panel.
Is that an annual savings?
That is correct. So that's correct, and...
So that means if we get that 100 grand, my taxes will go down, right?
It's gonna bring that water and sewer bill down, is what we're gonna do.
Okay, just checking.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Debbie Stork, 100 Lincoln Avenue.
Can I stay here or...
Yeah, you can stay. We can hear Debbie Stork back here.
I'm, this wasn't what I'm here for. I'm familiar with the solar panels that were put in at a school out of FAM, and major stormwater management is involved when you put them in. I mean, it's major stormwater management.
Okay.
So, I mean, just don't go put them in the field. All right, that's not what I'm here for. And, uh, this is concerning the workshop minutes from July 23rd. Gene Minner was talking about the grant funding for the sidewalk, the new sidewalks on High Street and Locust Lane and out that way. My question is, that grant funding was applied for specifically for that area? Am I presuming? And why was it just for that area?
Well, you're asking me a question that I can't answer, and we'd probably have to have Gene Minner to answer that question, but I know that it was an area that did not have sidewalks, and I think that that was part of the grant process, and it was a federal grant. And we haven't moved forward on that grant because there was a lot of hooks attached to that federal grant to put those sidewalks on locusts, and, is that correct? You'll have to help me a little bit.
One of the, one of the issues to, as a goal of that project, was to allow continuity between a large residential development of Friendship Road, for example, to connect Locust Lane and High Street, and then meet the ADA standards for ramps all the way down, so we have a tie-in and continuity there. The, what we're doing right now is our engineer is surveying the property to see where the board property stops and starts, actually, the boundaries of that property, so we know if we're approachable in this property or if we need to acquire easements. So it's, it's something in progress right now in terms of finding the area in which we would put these sidewalks.
But going back to that grant, we kinda tabled that grant because of all the hooks with the federal government. We weren't gonna move it. We're, we're getting, gonna get some estimates on doing it ourselves. But I can get you better, probably get Gene Minner to get in touch with you to give you the actual...
Well, what I don't understand is there's places in town that need sidewalks much worse than High Street and Locust Lane going out into Friendship Heights. I mean, if you have to walk without a sidewalk, that's about the safest place in town there is to walk without a sidewalk. And there's many places that need sidewalks, so I, I didn't quite understand the purpose of why you went through all that for a grant for that particular area.
And, and she's not here, and I can't answer it.
All righty. Um, well, I can answer it, because here it is in the minutes of the workshop. It says, Gene stated that the upgraded sidewalks would be a continuation of the improvements at the senior apartment complex on East High Street. So is that the basis of why you were allowed to apply for that grant? And those people that live in that apartment complex are going up High Street and out into Friendship Heights? I mean, not granted they might be, but anyway, I just, that was just a question. Did, do you know if that grant included the piece of Locust Lane between High Street and Main Street? There's a note in here that different, or more engineering needed to be done, and I suspect that's no reason why you tabled it.
That was not part of it. That was not part of it, yeah.
All right. Um, did you all come to any conclusion about the sidewalk at the Methodist Church? Because it says here you were gonna discuss it at a meeting, regular meeting.
We had a price and we sent a board contract to do it, say 100 grand.
Yeah, we, we did get a price, and it was a little over 100, or right at $100,000 to do that section of sidewalk. And I'm gonna find the money to make that happen. That is a terrible sidewalk.
Yep.
And we have to get that and replace. That's truly a safety issue.
All right, that's all in one day. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, let's see, I got Mr. Ron Walter of 242 Douglas Street.
I'm working on 242 Douglas. I just pretty well comment on the...
Hold the mic up to you, sir.
I wanna comment on the effectiveness of the little storm we had last night, which shocked me. I mean, when I was in Missouri, I seen as many as seven funnels at one time, so, but I didn't see any funnel, but I seen that tree out in front of my house.
Yes.
And, uh, they've been, the town's been very good to date in cleaning up the debris in the area. They haven't reached the street where I'm at yet, but I assume that they will, and I hope they will. My biggest thing is, we have landlords and we have slum boards. And, and I try to be as diplomatic as I can, because I don't, you know, I don't wanna offend anyone, but when you have a landlord that has a, a problem with a home, whether it be in the tree or in the house itself, or the occupants, or whatever the case might be, you think that the man would have a heart to realize that there's people that walk them streets on Douglas Street, you know, they want kids, adults, some with animals, some without animals. But when you've got a branch, three or four branches hanging from a 35, 40-foot tree hanging, that could, the slightest wind as of yesterday could be detrimental to someone or something. Now, inasmuch as, he was notified, there's no doubt about that.
Yes.
What I, what I've seen in the past few meetings, and I'm not saying, is the, why is the code enforcement, does someone speak for him here, or does he speak for himself? What's the story with him?
He would speak for himself.
Okay, but is he, is he at the meetings?
He's been here multiple meetings, but he's not here to see me.
Yeah. Maybe he knew I was coming, I don't know.
There you go.
That's not the point. Um, when you have a person that, that knows the children, little children and adult people, senior citizens, myself being one of them, that has to walk out on the street to, I'm afraid for walking down the sidewalk with fear of that, you know, a branch falling, I mean, I think that man should be sending a letter and say, hey, you know, act, you need to do something.
Okay.
I mean, why wait till after the fact, you know, of the storm and, and not even show up? I mean, not even show up on the property?
Yes, or so.
At all.
The landlord.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I had roughly, I guess $2,000 worth of damage done to my, my house, which I had to take care of because of the insurance, you know. I had a 30-foot, uh, willow elm out back, 30-foot high, and it fell, and now it's laying on the property in back of, in back of me, which is Winter Village, it's laying on that fence. So the insurance company said, well, you know, your policy, you know, it's not covered. It didn't do anything structural damage, you know?
Okay.
You know, so it's there. Fortunately, I know someone in the tree service that's gonna get rid of it for me, because he can use the wood, you know, fires home and so forth.
And we'll be out there with the town and...
I'm not complaining about that.
Yeah.
What I'm complaining about is, is actually a landlord, you know, and I don't need to put his name on a front. It's not that important.
Well, I'm not sure how much we can do in this situation. Lou, do you have any suggestions? I mean, I know, I know that...
Who are you talking about?
Well, he's on, in Friendship Heights on Douglas Street.
I have Douglas.
We have, we had, of course, during this storm situation, he had trees down, and the lands, and the landlord did not react to take care of this tree. And it could be a safety issue.
Mark, Mark, I pronounce that Italian name to save my soul, but I call him Mark, and that's the way, what I choose. And he chose to be called, you know, he called him Mark, he's one heck of a man. I mean, he, he understands, he understands what, you know, what he's doing. It's not all about money. I'm not gonna say he's not making money, but he deserved to do that. But what I say though, is he shows, shows by his going, you know, for the people that are renting from him or whatever. He was out there right after that. I bet within three minutes, you know, he was there on the property. Well, we saw it, gentlemen, I mean, I'm like...
Well, I can promise you, Chip will be out there again tomorrow taking a look at it, and if there's anything we can do, we're gonna do it.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've got Mr. Ray Walters of 307 Augustine Highway.
Nice to see everybody again. About six or eight weeks ago, I stopped in, basically complained about being a new business in town, not having anybody behind these blue counters stop by, say anything, no one from the Chamber of Commerce, nobody from the Alliance. At the end of the meeting, several people kinda grabbed me out there, we'll be by, we'll see it, we'll introduce ourselves, we'll get, get the ball rolling. And within the next two weeks, I had three citizens that attended the meeting come by and, and, and I ran a layoff, said, you'll never see anybody. Those clowns will never show up. They don't really care about it. You're not downtown. All kinds of different stuff was set. Kinda let it go off. So it's about six to eight weeks, I haven't seen anybody. I think what you people need to do, somebody needs to be charged with the responsibility when a new business comes in town, be it a bar, be it a spa, be it a daycare. If they're licensed and they're paying taxes to this town, somebody needs to go out and acknowledge them and make them part of it. Just tonight, somebody from the Alliance approached me and said, hey, I wanna get together with you and meet with you and everything like that. I'm not sure if that was because I was here, and, you know, the other shoe was about to fall. But you can all sit here and grandstand in your meetings, because that's what I think most of yous are doing. I think you really need to get out, and you really need to do something. And I realize everything downtown is important, and as I said before, people drive up and down Route 40, what the outside of Elkton's perception of Elkton is what they see up and down Route 40, and those empty mar, and these empty shopping centers. Somebody mentioned earlier about the panhandlers out there. That's what, that's what people say. Don't live in Elkton, people that live in Newark talk about it. So my point is, I think somebody somewhere has got to be charged, and I'm not sure who it is. I don't really know much about, you know, the line and chain of command here, but I think that needs to be somebody. If you want new business in Elkton, you're gonna have to do something to earn it, because they're not lining up to come in here. You've got more leaving than you have coming in. Ask yourself why? That might be part of, part of the question. It's not, it's not a friendly town for new business to come into, either in town or in the outskirts of town. So I'm just asking you to do a little soul searching and think about that if you wanna fill some of the shopping, shopping centers up in malls up.
Very good.
I got a comment to make. First of all, I'm, I don't wanna be called a clown. I'm not a clown, I'm a citizen just like anybody else. So whoever those people were that said that, some of them live and breathe the bar atmosphere. Some of us don't have that in us as far as the going. I'd be more than happy to come out and visit you and do whatever I have to do to, to make you comfortable. But the thing is, if it's not on your agenda, just to run in and show your face, now that's where you're being a fake. Now, myself, I know I said to you, I'd be more than happy to stop out and visit you. Haven't been out that way, and I apologize, but it ain't because I'm a clown or it's, I don't care about your business. I'm just sharing this, which...
What is the reason?
Okay?
And I would make a remark as well. We had a couple board members that tried to stop out, and you were not there at the time, because I did mention it at a meeting, that, and we all did not know it was a new owner, and I think I said that to you as well.
You did.
Because it was the same name, and we just didn't know. So a couple board members did stop out there, and you were not there, so I apologize for that.
Well, that's good to know, because if some did, that message, that message didn't get, that message didn't get to me. I'm not there 24/7, so I, I understand. For that, I apologize, so. Okay.
And, and just to respond?
Yes, sir.
On the holiday, I spend my time having a basketball clinic and basketball tournament for kids to have something to do on my time. Whenever I have time, I share, if I'm not at a football game, basketball game, or something with my grandkids, I might have time to stop out into your establishment, but there's other things than just stopping there to show my face to be a fake. That's my point.
Earl, we've been there 18 months now.
I've been here 57 years, and each day of my life, I'm either responding with family issues and also town issues, not just to visit somebody to say I showed up. But I, again, I'm saying, I'm not doing that just to...
I'm not asking for you to show up, I'm asking for people to recognize that there are new businesses in town, and if you want new businesses, do you mean to put you on the defensive about it?
Well, I'm not defensive because of the state.
But for, but for whatever those reasons, I'm sure there's some financial gain for the people that are, that are up here and all like that. So I don't really know what your responsibilities are, but I can't think that it wouldn't be somebody's responsibility. And, and if, if, Mary Jo, if somebody did stop out in that last, it's, it's, it's great that you did, I apologize that I wasn't there. But again, it's new business.
Very good.
You know, we do things out there to raise, we did the LS Ice Bucket Challenge, we raised over $500. I'm not sure who did or did not know about it type of a thing, but would've been great if somebody from the town would've come out and helped us bring that 500, raise that $500.
And who was invited? You did invite me.
You were invited, and, and I don't know if, if that invite got to any of the people because, you know, commissioners or not, but the, you know, the point is, and I'm not, that, that was a choice type of a thing.
Very good.
I, I just think, Earl, and not to put you on the defense, and I will say that the person that stopped in and said that is not a bar, bar-type person, because I know there's a stigma that goes with people that hang, hang in bars all the time. But, you know, again, we've been there, it's been 18 months. You're probably aware, maybe or not, we're actually doubling our size, you know, starting, so we're doing something right out there. Our shopping center is completely full out there. So that's, that's, that's good for us, that's good for my landlord, so. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, I have Mr. Andre Watson. Is he still here, or did he leave?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is.
My management team is here as well. Kevin, can you... I think we're gonna talk a little bit about summer jam.
Very good. I think you had a, you were gonna say a little bit about the event on Saturday.
Hold the mic up to you.
Um, we're throwing a...
Can I, let me introduce, it was brought up at a couple meetings, but Andre, who was very shy, but, Andre Watson is a graduate from Elkton High School, and he was recently signed with Atlantic Records. And so he is sitting here along with one of his management team, Kevin Bodie. And actually, there are some Boys and Girls Club staff from the Elkton House, if anyone had any questions, they are here as well. And tell a little bit about what he's doing for the community this weekend.
Andre, if I could get your address before you go on, so we can have it for the minutes.
88 Sterrup Drive.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let everybody know, we're throwing a benefit concert for the Boys and Girls Club of Elkton. We drove by there, we visited a couple times, and we see they definitely needed, as far as building is concerned, and just the overall presence, and we thought that would be a great way to, to help contribute. I think a lot of people misinterpreted the event, because I'm labeled a hip-hop artist that this is a hip-hop concert, but it's very far from it. It's, we have rock and roll bands, we have country singers, we have a wide variety. So I know there's a lot of concern about, there may or may not be any issues at the event. We're doing everything, we're working with the town police. We're doing everything, we're working with the town police. I have private security as well. We're doing everything that we can to ensure that it's a peaceful event. Can I guarantee that there will be no issues? No. With the amount of people that we're expecting, I don't think anybody here could guarantee that there will be no issues, but we are working to, to do the best that we can. Now, as far as any other concerns, I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have for me.
Actually, I don't have any.
I think, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I'm sure it was hard, hard-earned. And thank you for coming out and explaining exactly what's going on, because I, I'm, I'm one of those that was in the dark. Didn't know that there was country music singers coming or, or anything else. But good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to come here and address all of us.
No problem.
And good luck to you and your endeavors.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
What was the date you got?
It's this Saturday.
Where is it located?
It's at Meadow Park.
Andre, it's good to see you. Of course, you were a former student of mine when I was administrator at Elton High School. How will your security partner with the police or chief? How will your police department's secure, security partner with him? And the reason why is you don't know what kind of crowd it's going to be there. Hopefully, you have a nice crowd, but, and you don't know whether there's going to be any issues, but certainly, it's always nice to have the presence of the police or legal enforcement on hand. So, have you all discussed how you all are going to partner with that?
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday. Andre's got three personal security guards that are there specifically for, for him. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we'll have a officer or two in the area of where he's going to be doing his signing in addition to his own security personnel. And we're going to have about 14 officers on duty for this event specifically.
Very similar to the setup for the Fourth of July?
That's right, yeah.
And what time is your event?
It's from 5:00 o'clock to 9:00 o'clock.
How many people were you expecting?
A rough estimate of about 1,000. Could be more, could be less, weather permitting.
What about the lighting as, as, as time moves closer to 12?
We were discussing yesterday that we were going to turn on the, the town lights at about 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have the lights on, the football field lights on way before it gets dark. In a way, there's no change in the environment there, those lights will be on, and as it gets dark, it'll stay light on the field.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anyone else on my list. Mr. Gary Stewart. 100 Lincoln Avenue.
Are you sure?
Yes, I got your address down.
I hate to go on credit with you people, but there's a couple things I don't understand. I haven't heard any more about Bruce Snyder's property. They always got a hell of an investment right there. I hear no discussion in here whatsoever. I'm on account. This thing started many, many years ago. I thought they, Lewis said they're going to take $85,000 in order to get that well number five fixed, but yet we can't take $9,000 out of the same damn account and pay for a validation deal. I'm getting a little tired of, you know, I don't know what the town's priorities are. America knows well that as long as you have people running up downtown with shirts on, it's not going to work. Now, I can't, I, I, I don't understand all of those. I'm not a lawyer. But if you have a business in this town, and you have a sign there, you cannot come in unless you have top proper apparel on, shoes, shirt, and everything else. Now, what the hell is wrong with this town? Can't we go within their town, town limits? If you enter town limits, you'd be dressed up for good.
We're going to have that answered.
And I haven't heard nothing from the lawyer over here, but comment, is that contract feasible or non-feasible? That Bruce Snyder girl done?
Well, the contract, I think, that you're talking about, about the two wells that were dug, probably during your term as Commissioner, that contract is void. Is that correct? That was my understanding.
It's still valid.
It's still valid.
Okay. Let me ask you something, Mr. Stewart. Why is it valid?
It's a 20-year agreement.
I never signed a photo on anything for 20 years with him?
It's in writing. It's a 20-year agreement that begins 2006, I believe. Let me go up and check. But it's 20 years.
Okay. Let me ask you this. You're a man with all the knowledge over here. It seems like because nobody else knows anything.
Well, the board, the board signed it.
Yeah, well, I don't think I signed that. It's not to my recollection. But let me ask you something. I'm, I'm getting a little beat up. You said this sidewalk's going to cost $100,000. What was the contractor to give you that price?
Wasn't the contractor, was the engineer's estimate probable cost?
Why don't we do things proper? Why don't we get somebody, goddamn KCI is getting by anyway, does have a thing. Why don't you find out what it's going to cost? You know who's on the other side of the street, Lewis? The Department of Public Works. And I know it didn't cost $100,000. I know that. I don't, I, I think when we get figured out here in the public, we should, we need to question things.
We will. I think that the...
I don't know what Lewis has got against another church and that strip up there, but it must be something.
Actually, I went to the Baptist church when I was young.
Yeah, I realize that. I think you must have forgot things. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm not quite done. Thank you.
Not already.
You're talking about, let me give you an idea. You're talking about meters. I was here when we bought these new meters that were supposed to be able to be repaired. All right? Some of them really give the town a bill of sale. And I can't understand why you guys are really interested in hiring somebody to patrol. I think you need to cover them all up. Leave the meters in place. I wouldn't want to go into the expense of that. And may I ask you, Mayor, how much money are we in the rears on collection of meter fees?
Well, it's actually on this report here. I can tell you exactly what that number is. It's that figure of one so far that has not been collected.
You're talking about the fines?
Yeah.
It's 70,000. Just shy of $70,000.
How much?
Just shy of $70,000.
Okay. Now, are you going to hire a person to set it?
Is that right? Steve, hold on, hold on. I'm sorry.
I think that's actually ordinary.
$234,000?
That is un...
For uncollected fines?
One time, two people that we hired to get a percentage of those bills paid. Well, I think, if, if that's a true for $234,000, I covered a meter. I wouldn't worry about enforcement. I would do away with the enforcement on it, because it seems like to me, everyone's going to be part of it.
Well, once again, we're getting the, we get the same answer, that's uncollectible. We'll give the fine, and, and they've gone through the channels, and, and, you know, I can only go by what our former counsel had stated, but now, I can ask Mr. John Downs to take a look at it today and see how we can enforce that.
Well, what I'm trying to say to you, it's a waste of money on what I can see as a service. If you've got $234,000 in the rear, that's a lot of things that could go on out here that hasn't gone on.
And, and that $234,000 is accumulated over, that's an ongoing, it's been over probably the last 15, 20, 20 years. It's not like it just happened yesterday, but it's going, it's been over many years.
I want this clear understanding between the ward and myself. I'm not here to criticize you. And I'm not here to criticize Lewis. Lewis makes me mean English. It's a thing that I work with him, and I know how he is. But, you know, guys, if you want a valve, you don't have to have these like that. You know that? All right. So, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is, who's in charge of this? Is it you, Mr. Mayor, and the board, or is it Mr. Stewart?
No, you're, you're absolutely right, Gary, but, you know, I, I will add a little something to that valve real quickly, and it really hasn't been brought up, and we probably should have brought it up. We did have a recommendation from KCI, or through Ken Venner to replace that valve. Now, this valve is going to create additional pressure in certain areas of Patriots Glen, and it's also going to possibly give us more fire flow. The issue with that was, when those houses were designed, was that they were built, those houses were built with pumps to allow that pressure to build back up on its own. And what we're finding is that that valve, and I'm just, and I've got my head of public works back here, this may not be the best thing to do, because we have Severn Trent saying, yes, we're looking at it from the other side of it a little bit too, that we, it may cause some issues elsewhere. And, and I know we really didn't want to get too much into that today, but that's some of the reporting that I've been getting back from our public works.
But it's very hard for me to know anything about that when I'm sitting...
That's correct. That's correct. You're absolutely correct.
It's to me, it's very simple. When you're talking to 10,000, you guys act like it's a million, but yet, they'll spend 80,000, 90,000 on a street.
Yep.
Which I think is a priority. Don't get me wrong, I'm smart enough, I'm smart. Now, let me get back to Mr. Stewart and his contractor, Bruce Snyder. Has anything been done in order to the property where that well is on been turned over to the town? What are the stages of the tower that they're supposed to be, be brought online sooner or later?
The only way they're obligated to build the tower is if the town approves, I think, 2,400 units. And once that's approved, there's a period of, it can be appealed, but it has to be beyond that appealable period, and then, then they have to start plans for building the tower.
Okay, so, the first step has failed as far as...
They need a PUD and...
They're not going to be able to pump that well without the town, is that correct?
It's the town's well.
Well, what, here, here's my part about this thing. It seems like they have ordered the contract. What, no matter what the legality is, I think it needs to be looked at. If they haven't took the first step to sign that property over to the town, they're violating that contract. Am I right, lawyer?
Yeah, I was just going to say, why don't we consider this a new...
Okay, and one other thing. I heard it discussed in here last week, and I'll get out of here. Heard it discussed last week. You people need some kind of cooperation between the Stanley Fire Company and the town water supply. At one time, this board had a representative going to the board meetings. It was a gentleman living in the Heights out there, I don't know. But he was, he was actually a councilman. And what, what you really need to do is, you maybe have a radio add to the waterworks when they know they've got a working farm. And that's pretty easy to tell. They just, they just turn on the pumps. But to me, there's, there's cooperation needed there. I'm not representing the fire company. I'm just, I got a house senator, and I don't want it to burn up. I, you know, I want the water to flow. I think both parties need a little cooperation together, is what I'm saying.
Very good.
Thank you for your talk.
Thank you.
The police department said, first of all, for notification of Severn Trent whenever it was acquired.
Yeah, I knew that after our meeting, our last meeting, I knew that that went through. I saw Chief Donnelly and Severn Trent had discussed about contacting the fire company. Mr. Bob Litzenberg?
Just one question about the parking and the, all the money that's in arrears for uncollectible parking fees, tips, whatever they may be. If you have a vehicle that's in a park, in a no parking zone, and it's left there for two or three days, do they tow it away?
Well, listen, I, I got to defer over to the chief on this. I, I'm not, I, I don't have an idea of exactly what we'd do in that situation. We may.
Well, my point is, if you've got the same repeat offenders, evidently, it's the same people with Delaware tags, Pennsylvania tags, or even Maryland tags. I guess you can, if they have a certain amount of fees that they owe, that these, through the state, you can get the money back or they get their license. But they're not reciprocal in the other two states from what we've been told. If it's the same people, same vehicles, whoever they force, a forceful code officer at that particular time, he must remember those cars. Why can't you tow them until they pay the fee? I mean, this was brought up before, and the other chiefs said, "Oh, we can't do that." Now, that put the boot on, "Oh, we can't do that either, because we might destroy a rim." That's what we were told. But if you park it in a no parking zone for a long period of time, they tow it away? Somebody's going to pay to get that vehicle back. I would think it would be the same principle. Maybe I'm wrong. Just a thought.
Very good. Ms. Danielle? Yeah, come on up. State your address.
Danielle Carroll, 200 Getmier Avenue, Elton. With all the discussion about the parking meters and the fact that it is going to go back into workshop, I, I hear a lot of talk, and Mr. Stewart brought up how much is in the rears, and I think, I just wanted to bring the light. I feel the more important question is, how much is actually being collected? And so, not how much is owed, because if they are uncollectible, and, you know, being in the finance industry and knowing what's able to be collected versus what are just empty threats by whoever your vendor is that's doing this collection process for you on your behalf, that's not necessarily funds you can ever count on. But if you're collecting funds, I think there was a study done with some approximations over a year for the parking lots and the meters that were being fed over behind Minneham's when they were looking to do some renovations back there. And from my knowledge, the, the collection wasn't very high on what those meters brought in individually over a 12-month period. And I think that's the more important question when you go into workshop, is what are these meters bringing in in actual revenue, not what we're not collecting, versus what is the cost to hire somebody to monitor? Because there's your actual net expense. And if it's an expense, that's fine, but what is the value that it's bringing in that, in that net cost? So, is it bringing value to the fact that you can monitor that people aren't parking downtown for long periods of time, enabling, you know, businesses to not have traffic, things of that nature? So, it's more of a, a, you know, net income versus your benefit. So, when you go into workshop, I would, you know, as a citizen, ask that you not jump to hire somebody new right away, but look at that bottom line. Is it going to cost 70,000 to hire somebody to monitor this, and we're only bringing in 40,000? And if so, is that 30,000 worth the value that that patrol is bringing? So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I would welcome everyone here next week for the parking meter. Okay, Mr. Dick Reed, you're my last one today.
Well, I'm probably the oldest one.
There you go. The last one of the day here.
My knowledge back here. Well, just a side comment that Bob Litzenberg brought up about we were approached by the hookers. Now, I, I referred to hookers back to him, because I was too old. I don't know why you're looking to meet these people.
Yeah, a little scary. Mr. Dick Reed, your address?
110 Washington Avenue. For the audience, several weeks ago, the gentleman in the back row with the dark glasses on were furnished glasses by DJ because there was certain glare coming off of the lights on his head and Mary's. And we were presented dark glasses to wear at the meeting.
Yes, for safety.
The group met and had a meeting with electrician. And we were talking about putting filters on the light where it would confuse the light. And we kicked that around a while. And then we contacted a wig company. Colonial Wig Company with the white wig with the curls like George Washington wore. Well, we didn't know about whether that would do or not, so we discussed that we ought to have a permanent solution to the problem.
I'm liking where this is going.[1726.62]
So, we would like you to try this product. It's Rogam. I've tried it for several weeks.
Absolutely.
And give us a report back on how it works.
I think visually, you'll get, you'll get the report. And to relapse from back there, thank you very much.
Very good. You know, I, I love the comments that we have from, from our, from our town residents and our audience, listen, that's the only way we're gonna get better as a team here. And it is important for your comments to be brought out to the table. At no point have we ever said that we were experts up here, you know, we're just like you guys. I mean, we're just residents of the town of Elton, we ran for elected office, we get elected, we work with our town staff the best that we can, and we, we rely on your input. And I applaud our audience for coming here and saying what they say, because it is important to us, and that's the only way we can get better. And I, I welcome your comments, and, and I hope that we can continue to do this, 'cause it's gonna make us better. And, you know, I'd just like to say, we are Elton, and I think there's a lot of great criticism here, but it's not because we're trying to be so critical of each other, it's everyone out here wants us to be a better town, and I do agree with that, and I think we all feel that way. And keep 'em coming, it's very important, it's, I'm proud to see how many people we have out here tonight. I mean, this is a great audience out here, I can tell you, many years ago, when I served, it'd be two or three people, and this is wonderful, and I thank you, and I thank you for coming, and I hope you continue to come and continue to give us your thoughts, and, and please, when we let the ball down, tell us we let the ball down, and keep on us. I feel as though we've got a good group here, and we are gonna get better, it's gonna take us a little while to gel as a group, but I promise you, we're gonna be a good team up here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.